And everything there is fit to be, it literally just needs the heat and putting in, in simple terms.
So, but again, it furnishing, it would have to be furnished if it's going to be used as a council chamber and councils.
I think there's more costs accruing to this than we've got. I mean, I think all you've done is looked at the building re- re-
Yes, so it doesn't bring any moving costs.
It doesn't bring moving costs, it doesn't bring other things in. So, twenty seven thousand three hundred and seventy five pound is the estimate. Is building works. Purely building works, there's costs on top of that, which will entail the move from here to there. Any other fabrics, chairs.
Possible replacement furniture.
Furniture, anything else like that. And whether we decide to have anything else up there. It will be over and above that figure. So this is purely for building work.
Can I make a suggestion? I'm not going to make a proposal, but obviously we need to go out to tender for something that's likely to happen. But as part of that group, when I think it's councillor Lucas Flanksby and Low, I joined the group late. I like to think that we could do this in a professional way, so perhaps as a group, we should be presenting the council members with a particular business plan. We start looking into this, you know, what everything's going to cost. The council already has authority for new furniture in here, which still because someone measured it wrong and told. So, we know there's the money available for these things, but we've got nothing set in stone, what you would expect from a professional organisation, which we can say this is what's going to happen. Of course, there'll be things you'll come across later that need to be added, but that's the way I'm looking at it, that we haven't got a plan.
Okay, thank you, David. Can I just read something out? This is minutes from the meeting of the fourteenth of January two thousand and fifteen. After much discussion proposed by councillor Alan Walters, seconded by councillor Alan Low and agreed with five votes for and three against by councillors Julius Clifton and Noel, that approval moving forward with option B, whatever that was, and that the council relocate Princess Avenue subject to building regulations, planning and potential sources of funding, is the way it's phrased. That a working group established to progress this decision. So that was the decision. So, according to that, we have agreed that we will relocate Princess Avenue, subject to, again, that problem of building regulations. If we don't get, I can't imagine not going to get building regulations.
Well, this is where, sorry, the council was running comments before the other chairman.
Just a question, if we, if you move the offices of the council there, doesn't that void then the use of the building for the things like the music, the crash, the youth? Does it not need, does it need enough space to keep them?
I don't know if you've seen the plan there, Martin's passed you on there, but half of the building could be used for the council, half the building could be used for, for public or community events and on other costs. And in actual, going back to the January meeting, the January meeting obviously made the decision to move, and actually reported it. The report that came back in the middle of the, between then and now, established that building regulations won't be an issue, established that, or that members on the group there, which I think was councillor Walters, had looked into that, and there was proposed that there would be no issues. The only thing that came out of that meeting was that they thought that fifty eight thousand pounds was too much money, and could it be reviewed, what if it was done, if it was done piecemeal, done in little bits? And that's why we've come back, that's why I've kept it simple. Because the previous meeting had sort of said, planning shouldn't be a problem, indicative indication was that if it was used as a community centre, we could get funding from county council. I have spoken with Richard on the phone in the last fortnight, and we've spoken about things of carpets, the internet, moving the office, functionality up there, i.e. we have to have computer accesses. And if we put a ballpark further on that, if you were to total it all, it would probably look at another ten thousand pounds on top of that, and that would be probably the top rack of it. Let me assume this tender will be done professionally. It's not going to be something just handwritten by ourselves. I remain a bit concerned because I'm not sure about whether we've taken everything into account here. What we must remember is that we have to give notice to the Victoria Hall by the thirtieth of September this year. That is the final date, six months before we will actually move. If we miss that date, then it's another year before you can give notice. So, that is a timescale you're looking at. So it's fairly tight, I guess. And before we can give that notice, I'm sure that everybody wants to be sure that we will move, pardon me, that we've got work in progress, we've got a good tender for the work we want to do. And also additional, additional things, considerations like, in the meantime, we're also taking over, or possibly taking over a conservatory, which is going to be an additional workload. And we're also considering starting work on the neighbourhood plan, or bringing in additional workload at that crucial time. So I think what I would like to see is something that ties in with what you've just said, sort of like a business plan for the move. Because what I wouldn't want to see is it done in little bits and bobs, because if we do that, then it's going, something's going to be missed.
Well, we can play one thing, though, it doesn't need building regulations, it's no building regulations. And the other thing, the only other thing would be a change of views. We'd have to get that sorted out.
Yeah, I mean, but we need to plan all these.
That's right.
Because obviously anything like this is going to take time. How long's it going to take for the tender to be written? Who's going to write the tender? How long's it going to be put out before we can get responses? How long then after we've chosen the right contractor, will the work be completed? All those sort of things need to take into account, and a time plan drawn, that would be what I would be looking for.
Well, I mean.
Hang on, just a minute.
You've given us a date of when we have to give notice. Now, obviously, this has dragged on since last year. Now, I think, I don't know what the general opinion is of the new council now, but my opinion is we should do this because it involves the community and gives us a better space. But what I would hope from this evening is that Richard would probably enlighten us of when we give notice, how long that's for. That would then give us the date of when we're moving. And if we can get an agreement this evening that we are doing it, now that means that if it looks like the working group, which includes me, and I hope it wouldn't do, is failing the council, and it's not going to happen, then we don't give notice in September. But I keep saying, we need a date so that when you go to people for contracting or whatever, and it also pushes us as a group to actually get on with it and say, what's going to be the problem here? What's going to be the problem there? How do we solve it? And we get the plan, and we can bring you reports each meeting, how we're progressing. I would like to see it done like that, if that's agreed.
But I think, one of your questions there was, if we did notice on the thirtieth of September when we moved by, we give six months' notice.
Right.
So it'd be the.
But we could move out before, if it happened.
Before giving notice, you've got to be certain that you're going to go.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying now. We're now in July, so if we made the decision tonight that we were going to move in January or the start of the new council, you know, for the year, April two thousand and sixteen, then at least we have a goal. And if it looks like we're failing and not doing it, because I don't want to keep going through this process where we just bring you a different quote for here and there. We've got to get a grasp of it and actually do it. But we don't want to commit, I don't personally want to commit a lot of time because it's a big project, if we don't have a date.
Can I ask what the accommodation is for the council on here compared to what we're sitting in and the office next to it? Size?
Of course you can ask. Haven't got a, haven't got a size there, and this is what the square meter is there. But I could pretty much say that the council chamber is about twice the size.
No, no, well, I was.
And the, and the office is probably about only as third as big again.
So there's more space?
There's certainly more space than in what I currently.
For the town council.
Obviously, we've got to go, we've got to think of going forward and look to the potential move. But personally, I don't think I can say definitely we're going to, because we need to have the accounts for everything. Not, not just this building work, we need, we need, we need everything, as it's already been suggested. And until we get that, I don't think we are in a position to make a decision that, yes, we're going, we're going to move, because there may be some obstacles coming up. And personally, I think that is the safest way to go. Saying that, that we do not have to give notice until the end of September, so you've got time there to make a decision. Yes. Obviously, we would want to give the Victoria Hall as much notice as possible, but if we can do that, we would. Not without being definite on what we want to do also.
Yes, there's one point, that say we don't move into it, and we, we go to rent it, the work that's down there would have to be done anyway, because it's got to have central heating in it. We wouldn't be able to rent it without central heating, and the bit of joinery that is there, and the plumbing and heating as well, because it's been, the plumbing's for a fitness centre, and it's not for any other organisation. So that's all got to be written down anyway. So, I mean, really, we should be looking to see if we can get the building in shape anyway to do either moving for the, you know, the council moving, or rent it out, or turn it into a community.
But there's no reason why we can't go for formal tender now, decide not to do that.
No, there's no reason, no.
Because there'll be a timescale which might last three months before we get those tenders in. In that meantime, we can make all those sort of decisions about costs. And everything else that needs to be done for us to move eventually to Princess Avenue. I'm concerned that, the council was concerned about spending money, that's why we came back to the table. Some years ago, I'm not quite sure how many years ago, the council went out to formal tender to convert this building, and probably spent, I don't know how much, but thousands of pounds just on the tender document. If you go out to the wrong people to get a tender document, the tender document alone could probably cost you five to ten thousand pounds. If the council wants to waste money, crack on, that's all I'll say on that. I think tonight you should be agreeing to go out to tender based on converting it into a building fit for use, as anything but a fitness centre. We can go out from here and get more detailed costs on carpeting, on computer data, on data points, and on, well, the furniture thing is already being decided, because we, the furniture thing came to the council already. So to me, the tendering, yes, I agree with Martin that we want to make sure it's professionally done, but for somebody that's always harking about wasting public money, if you want to waste five or ten thousand pounds on somebody telling us what we already know, then, I'm sorry, I'm sort of thinking that all that I'm hearing is people that are blocking the move to the building. And that's my opinion.
Yes. While we're waiting for tenders for this, or you could go on the other route, where we just get different local companies to cope for it, while we're waiting for that, we could be still looking at getting the grant for doing the, the one, the side that we proposed in front of. Or we could look at getting grants for all of it, just in case we don't move.
Yeah, if you look at the timeline, I suggest that the tender is going to be the longest process. So while that's going on, there's other work you can be doing.
We can be doing all the rest in between.
Can I just clarify a point? I wasn't suggesting we brought in people to do the job for us. When I said professional, I was actually saying that we do it in a professional way. Sorry if I didn't clarify that. But also, I re-emphasise that we need a date, whether we're going to produce it ourselves. We can't just go to a contractor and say, can you do this for us? And the first thing they will say is, well, when do you need it done by? That's the issue I have, you know.
Last one, David.
Yes, you can get standard tender documents, and we've got the information we need to put in, it's on this paperwork that Adam's doing.
Okay. I think we need to come to a decision now. I think we've talked around this quite a while. So, the first decision required there is that the council puts the, is at a formal tender and agrees the process by which it hap- or this is to happen. Do I have any proposal for that? Okay, so about just now, can, Clark's out a moment. And seconded by. Okay, we're just on, I can, the council puts out, agrees a process, which has been proposed by David and seconded by Paul. All those in favour of that proposal? You know us. And the second one is that the council sets a date that formal tenders are to be in by, award works and completion dates. Now, I don't know whether we're in a position at the moment to do that, because we've got to know when, do we need to know when the tender's going to be ready by before we can do that? Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, in actual, on there, we haven't actually, because item one actually says that we agree the process by which this is to happen. Because in fact, we need to know whether we're going to advertise it, so I'd say there, the, as we said, we need to have a decision by September the thirty first? Sept- September the thirtieth?
The thirty first.
I mean, it's, oh no, it's not, well then, can we make one? Can we make a tender right to, to give us that extra day? I would say that we should endeavour to get this done by the end of September. Okay? I mean, that's, that's what I think.
Under tender process, in this set period that we have to have, do we have to have more than one month or two months or what do we have to have?
There's no limitation, there isn't. I mean, one of the, one of the issues is, last time that it was done, specification, which is what a contractor is going to need.
We've got a smaller specification.
Well, if members are happy that a tender is going to be done by in-house, then fine. So, if last time it was done by a firm of local architects.
I think they can do it.
I think you may want somebody just to castorise over, I don't know if you're in that position, am I? Well, James probably is more in a position to have that done than I, but that's how. But the thing is, I mean, that previous tender that was done over a year ago, the council sat on that, they could have utilised that, and they chose not to. So we spend thousands of pounds on something we've never used. So, okay.
We're asking for processes of formal tender, so can I suggest on item one that we advertise in proper?
We voted on item one already.
But we didn't decide the process, so we've just agreed, we've just agreed that we haven't.
We decided to go out to tender.
Yeah, and then it says agree the processes by which this is to happen, so that's what I'm doing there.
Take this as a second proposal, Martin. Agree the process by which this is to happen.
That's what I wanted to comment on, is that okay?
Yeah, sure, sure.
It's only my suggestions, is we advertise in proper building trade magazines for building. As we break down for plumbing and heating, we approach as a council as many local gas installers, central heating installers, because this is the sort of thing that a local business could do, which then gives us a good variety of quotations, and I'm available to go there. So if people say, well, if there's a lot of people, there's not enough time, I'm available to go there when someone wants to do a quote. And very similar with the joinery and plastering, basically, we go out to, we look for some in trade magazines locally or whatever, who do proper joinery and plastering, and we just approach people because there's one of the points raised to me today, that somebody wasn't approached for something locally.
Yes, when we do the tender, we need to put it out for all of it. We don't want to be splitting it. It'll just cost more money.
Right. Can I, can I have a?
Can I?
One more.
Can I disagree with that? Because, you know, generally, you wouldn't find that somebody who's going to install, if they're, for instance, a, I won't say a name, but a local heating specialist, they contract in people for, if they need plasters and things, but they generally wouldn't quote for that in this circumstance. I've spoken to people, and they've said on this that they would only quote for the plumbing and the heating, and I wouldn't want them to miss out. It's not a difficult thing, it's three different things. If it's advertised, you either tender for the whole thing, or you come to us. And if we don't have enough, and somebody comes in to do everything, and they're perfectly priced, then we go with that. But if we get three different people who come in, choose it.
One thing I would say, I've had a lot of work in on my house recently, and I got one person who covered all that work.
Very lucky.
Well, that, that, you choose the right one, you choose the right one.
Yes, yeah, I was just saying sometimes.
And I don't think you need to go out individually to a heating contractor or electrician, that there's something. I, 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 I want to stick with that date by the end of September. It's a tough call, but.
We can dare it.
If we, if we don't hit it, then it'll just. Two and a half months. Yeah, it just defaults, so it's, we'll, proposals will be aimed for the end of September. Okay, do you want to propose that? Yes, that is my proposal. Okay, then you give a second there, for David. Okay, all those in favour that the council attempts to get this tender in by the end of September?
Yes.
Favour? You know us. And, and on the final bit, the council sets a provisional date to relocate old at this time, decide that we probably do not make a decision on that. Okay? Any comments on that?
I don't know, I'll second it, because I'd like to move on, yeah.
Okay, right, so we're, can I vote on, on that? Sorry?
That's what I was just going to say, sorry.
Can I vote on that? We do not set the provisional, provisional date to relocate at the moment. Yeah, all those in favour?
That's why I haven't seconded by you, chair.
So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, four.
And I'm unfortunately voting against.
Record it, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, record it, voting against.
I think we should have a go.
Okay. Right, we'll move on to item ten, which is about the accounts. I know this item here, the report is from, from the clerk, who is important about progress, obtaining an independent firm of accounting to conduct a review of our accounts. But I've asked councillor Elliot just to give us a quick resume of what has happened to date before we make that decision.
Mr Chairman, quick, comprises a note that you have distributed. Do you want me to read the whole note? One and three quarter pages.
I mean, if you just, I, I'm just trying to read it, so you might summarise it.
On the twenty, by the twenty ninth of June, the accounts working group had identified three adjustments to be made to the accounts previously presented, for signature to the extent of June council meeting. At a special meeting called for the twenty ninth of June, the accounts working group believed these three adjustments, by then applied to the accounts and the annual return, were sufficient to warrant recommendation of those accounts for signature. Those amended accounts for signature, i.e. on a second occasion. By early the following morning, my claim itself was uneasy that the effect of two cashbook entries that had been brought to my attention in the minutes immediately before the twenty ninth of June meeting, the night before, meant that the adjustments made were possibly incomplete. And I asked to see that chairman straight away on a Tuesday morning took voice concerns, and asked that the accounts and annual return should not be submitted after all to Grant Thornton. Up to that point, the accounts working group, new accounts working group, fairly hastily convened because of the calendar, new council, new groups being appointed, had worked very hard to get to the bottom of the matter and produce a set of accounts with which it was happy by the twenty ninth of June. It didn't have very long to do that, and it, it had this timing very much in mind. So here we were, the day after the twenty ninth of June, facing a situation where, whether we liked it or not, that twenty ninth of June date was not going to be met. The point about that was that the council should get its accounts signed, approved by the thirty of June. It needs to do that under the audit commission, local authority rules. In the ensuing discussion that Tuesday morning between the chairman, the clerk and myself, it was proposed that the most sensible thing to do would be to get an independent firm of accountants to examine the council's records for the year and the accounts which had been brought up from it. The point being that at that, at that point, there was a feeling of unease, embarrassment even, that despite everybody's best effort, on two occasions now, the accounts were being put to the council for signature, and there was unease about the content. So, the credibility saved for the council and its members, maybe the best thing to do is to seek outside advice and get, if possible, an outside certificate from an independent firm of accountants, once and for all, to deal with that. Chairman agreed to put this course of action to the council, neither Grant Thornton nor the intern, nor the new intern auditor, were in a position to carry out the work. Grant Thornton are conflicted under parish council rules. Between that Tuesday, thirty of June, and this Monday, the sixth of July, the clerk and myself have agreed two further accounts adjustments to be added to the three original ones which have been applied. There's a bit of detail of this, and one of those additional two came directly out of the unease that I felt overnight after the twenty ninth meeting. And that unease stemmed from the two cashbook entries which had been brought to my notice only, only a few minutes really before that meeting. I felt at that time that the cashbook entries, while peculiar, had been allowed for in the adjustments we've done. And it was during the night and early morning after that that I came to do that this maybe wasn't necessarily the case. It, it may not be the case, and the entries may be incomplete. It's elsewhere recorded for this meeting that a firm of accountants has been approached, and I think we've talked about this separately, chairman, right? Now, there's a paper being circulated, I think, which is the response of that firm of accountants, Streets of Lincoln, who came in to see the mayor, the clerk and myself, two days ago. I felt they were impressive, I felt they grasped quickly the situation as it really was. And they have, to my surprise, come up in the middle paragraph of their email, which we were pains to try to negotiate with them the other day, that they will carry out a review, and subject to what they find, of course, they will give a certificate, a true and fair view certificate, that the council's, that the accounts and annual returns are in true and fair view of the council's financial performance for the year and have been properly prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting practice. Now, that's quite a surprise for me. A firm of accountants being asked to act in this way is, thinks very hard before, as to exactly what certificate they will give, because they're putting themselves on the line. So the fact that they've come up with that seems to me, it's up to you to, to give the importance to that you want. But for me, it's a, it's a very, very good out term, provided when they do, if you decide to get them to do the work, that they can give that certificate. I've summarised, this has gone on seemingly horrendously long, seemingly endlessly, and nobody would, nobody would have been happy. Four of the five adjusting entries are timing differences of the kind that I spoke to, spoke about two weeks ago at one of these meetings. And we use the job and then, you can't avoid doing it, the crawls and prepayments should have been put through the accounts when they originally prepared, and they weren't, and they are the bookkeeping accounting device that changes a set of cash statements into an income, an expenditure set of statements. So you bring in items that are not just receipt or payment of cash, you bring in items and charge them or credit them in an account where they clearly ought to appear, ought to be accounted for in that time period. So they are judgment items, bringing in timing differences. But they are the difference between receipts and payments and income and expenditure. It says elsewhere in this paper that when the partner from Streets came in, he was impressed with the level of receipt. with the level of receipts and payments details that were presented to this council each month by the clerk and impressed upon the amount and detail and that it was a great deal more than they see from a lot of other parish councils. And so in the main, these items, eventually all, I believe, identified are in this area of accruals and prepayments. A drill that should have been gone through in converting the statements from one to the other that simply weren't gone through by the clerk or by the internal auditor at the time. The other one, the cashbook entries, are put in here, it's a matter of cashbook discipline. And it simply revolves around the fact that items were put into cashbook, two items of rent received were put into cashbook when they hadn't been received. Now, that sounds a dark thing if you believe that a cashbook has got to incontrovertibly openly record what you have received, everybody does it at home, or what you've already paid out. In a way throughout this, I believe it to be the case, the clerk has allowed himself to be influenced unduly by account software that is set up in there and hasn't then been able, as a result of it, I don't know, had the time or whatever, to stand back and say that's fine, but then you have to bring an element of judgment and an extra layer of procedures to bear in converting what any account software throws up before you produce the accounts which you put your name to. These cashbook entries were anticipated, they've got rent in as if it had been received, which got itself the other side of which was put into income receivable. And you simply cannot have cashbook items that anticipate receipt or payment. Streets' partner's taken all of this away, grasped it quickly and competently. I've said that they're impressed with the level of the paperwork during the year and I've put in this note that nothing in any of this inquiry, while it's been arguably sloppy or verging on incompetent, there's no evidence that I've come across or the other members of the working group, when they worked on it with me, that there has been any intention to cheat or defraud. It is a question of, on a fairly simple level, even though it's taken an awful long time, the job simply wasn't done properly if we're being harsh. I think it will be in the future because the clerk has been reminded by these events that the, amongst other things, the professional parish council guidebook does actually take you through what you need to do with accruals and prepayments at the end of the period. And of course, you only do this once a year. All the rest of the year, it's cash in, cash out. Once a year, a balance sheet is at a date, you have to do this transferring over and conversion. So that's what this says because it believes it to be the case. I don't believe that the outside accountants, if you appoint them, will come up with anything that is any more worrying than mistake or work not done properly. I don't have anything more to say, sir.
I would just say that tonight we're looking purely at the item about whether we want to appoint a firm of external accountants or not. I would suggest to you that what Count Elliot's just been talking about would be a subject for future, once we get a report from those accountants. Because at the moment, we really need to make sure that our accounts are correct. There's no inactresses that we know of and that they are still submitted to an external auditor. And I'd like obviously to see that done as soon as possible. Dave?
Is this the figure they've given us, 1,200 plus VAT?
Max.
You will not exceed 1,200 plus VAT.
To start with, we're only talking about ninety pound twenty-eight, eight hundred and twenty-nine pounds.
You're talking...
Yes. Should I respond to this?
Yes, please do.
And if it's possible to arrive in a situation where if you miss out one of these timing differences of, to exaggerate, a million pounds on one side and you can have nine hundred and ninety-nine pounds on the other side, you only end up with a difference of one pound.
Yeah.
But it's simply not acceptable to produce financial statements for the authority, in this case, the Audit Commission, which has got errors on one side which have to reduce by counting each other out. I will appreciate that we've ended up with a series of adjustments.
So they're only going to tell us what we already know?
Yes, but in the process, sir, in the process, arguably, we've lost some credibility because of a whole lot of tiny things. The accounts were produced...
I understand.
The accounts were produced while the new council was forming. No other eyes looked at them. And then it was done in a hurry by 29th of June. We've now missed that and we'll get a quote later, we can talk about it. By missing the 30th of June agreement.
Okay.
I find, however small or however minor it's described, appalling that as a councillor, I can't stand here this evening and look at schedule of payments, statements and accounts, simple as that. That is our legal job. I don't understand what's been put in front of us tonight. I'm shocked to read in that piece of paper there saying minutes immediately before the 29th. Why was that not told to members? Members sat here and just nodded like they'd been cloned and we ended up with me being kicked out of the meeting. You know, this is embarrassing. We are local government and, you know, I've had people telling me, I won't mention names, well, why should we call the auditors in? You're all for saving public money, what a waste of money. I totally disagree. And, you know, I have no faith in the system. So does that mean if we don't call in the auditors because it will cost us money, I have to sit here for the next three and a half years saying, I don't accept that? Because that's the situation. I'm reading incompetence, people not doing their job properly. I know you didn't want to go on to that, but this is a serious issue. You know, we have accounts that should have went in after the 10th of June. We're going to be published on the internet that we have defective accounts. We paid people to do this. We paid an auditor. We as councillors, Mr Elliot has been doing a fantastic job. The law says, actually, he probably shouldn't be involving himself in financial matters. That's why we pay a proper officer and we paid an auditor. Something's gone wrong, so I say that we immediately call in the auditor so that we get confidence again in what's been happening. People know that I formally objected on behalf of the residents as a resident. The City of London Police are aware of the situation. So tonight, we just want, you know, to move forward and don't keep saying we can't talk about that. This is local government. You know, we've got a council that can't account properly for taxpayers' money.
Thank you. Just one thing, Chairman. The council book, how does he know? Will he put it there himself? Don't let's widen the discussion here because I'm on... Just a minute. What we're trying to do tonight is decide whether we're going to appoint a firm of independent accountants. But all this is going to be something of a discussion for the future. Yes?
Can I just quickly point out that it was the previous auditors who were published in 2009, the things, and that's how I found out that we were too close in 2009 to our internal auditor. So it won't just be me publishing it. It stays there indefinitely that we, for the first time ever, as a local authority, have not submitted accounts to an external auditor. That is a serious matter and I am fed up with people telling me it is not serious. I find it embarrassing.
Okay. What can I say to the business in hand, please? I want your attention.
Yeah, I think we should have the floor.
Does anybody propose that we bring in external auditors? I thought Martin was going to do that.
If I'm not... Unless you want to do it. Maybe the chairman should do it.
I think you should do it.
Do I have a proposal to bring in?
Well, I'll propose that we bring in...
Let the someone.
Although I don't know these auditors, I trust what we're being told by Mr Elliot.
So you're proposing that we appoint the firm of Streets?
And I propose, I propose that they do a full and thorough audit.
If you do that, then the cost will rocket.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't trust the thing when I'm reading things.
The quickest way to deal with that point is this point about true and fair view. Any firm you approach in these circumstances is, as I said before, going to think very hard as to exactly what certificate they give. And you, I can assure you, across a range of things is being done every day of the year. And a firm will end up putting something that really are no more than wheegeled words on it because they feel that's the furthest they can go because they're putting their name to it. A true and fair view certificate is going the whole way and so you should be reassured by that.
Okay.
Can you give us one more?
That's the problem where we're not qualified in this and we employ people and we trust that, but I hope that that will be the case, that we can then confidently tell the public, probably September, late September, that we now have accounts that are okay, hopefully.
They are responsible for that true and fair view certificate and are openly being challenged and why would they give that if they weren't happy?
Okay, well, propose on the table for now.
Can I just add one? The thing is, what I find difficult about it is that we keep getting emails saying that there's a not so serious thing has been found. None of us have been told actually what has been found. What are these cashbook entries? What are these non-serious issues? And that's where I find that I'm having difficulty because there's been a lack of communication from the office of what's been going on.
You have proposed that we appoint Streets' accountants to undertake a review of the accounts, fees not exceeding 1,200 pounds plus VAT.
No, I won't proceed, I won't propose a limit because they could find a problem and then we would have to agree to...
They have proposed not exceeding 1,200 pounds.
Oh, that's their quote?
Yes, their quote.
Okay, fine.
I do have a second there. All those in favour? Three, four, five, six. Six, all? Any against? Any abstaining? One abstention.
Four.
Four, sorry, I missed it. Can I just have another of the fours, please? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, four and one abstention. Okay, thank you very much. The next item is grant application. Please, let's all. Grant application on amendment B. All had a chance to read? Well, I hope somebody in the council has had much chance to read it, but do I have any comments about the grant applications of amendment B, council books?
Could I just suggest that you propose an extension because I think we're coming up to the limit because my battery's going, so that's the clue.
I'm sorry, I propose an extension for your battery.
No, no, I'm just saying we're getting close.
I know we are, I've got my eye on the clock, yes, thank you. Okay. Any comments about the grant application under amendment B?
I don't want to be first, but...
There's not a lot to it, actually, Chair. I mean, having looked at this, I mean, they've outlined what we want to achieve and I would, and subject to any of the comments, I would propose that we accept this grant application.
Second. Paul did that, you got a comment?
Yes, I had a comment and it's basically, sorry, Mr Stubbs, I'm getting cross all the way.
Just a minute, can we...
No, but I've mentioned this, it's unpleasant.
Go straight on with the business.
Yes. If you look at part five, it says, how much money are you applying for? 300 pounds. Have you applied for funding anywhere else? Please give details. No. Then I take it that we're being bullied, bribed, or whatever, into accepting this application because included, it says that they want 100 pounds for nibbles and drinks throughout the day, which sort of disappointed me the way it's worded and that. Because what the serious point about this is, it says, if your application is unsuccessful, are other funds available to ensure your project goes ahead? If yes, please give details. Yes. And I would suggest that money comes from Rutland County Council, but this is where I find it's appalling. We may just provide water and squash and drinks throughout the day. Sorry, the sums don't add up. And why should we give a grant application to a Rutland County Council event on the threat that children are going to be given squash instead of cans of Diet Coke? You know, to me, it's, it sounds silly, but it's appalling. The sums don't add up. They really don't add up. Is it a joke?
Thank you. Any other points?
No, I acknowledge Mr Brooks's point, Council Brooks's points, it's interestingly put. Unfortunately, I don't see the same thing that he sees, so my proposal still stands in front of him.
Well, I must admit, I'm one of Council Brooks's. I see this as an offshoot of Rutland County Council and Rutland County Council are not supplying any funding at all for this, which I find very strange. And I also noted the point he made about the 100 pounds in the nibbles and the water and squash and I find that it doesn't really tie up for me in that if we were going to do something, I would have proposed that we do some match funding rather than give them a lot. Give them 50% of whatever they're looking for with the view that they'll have to find funding from somewhere else. That'd be my idea, no?
Well, they're applying for 300 pounds, aren't they?
Yes.
Well, the youth offending services is 350, the nibbles is 100 and advertising is 50. That's 500 pounds of their project, isn't it? Well, they're only asking for 300 offers, it must be getting 200 from somewhere else.
Doesn't say so, does it?
It doesn't say so, but I mean, I just... So the maths doesn't add up. I just made a new trip.
Okay. Very quick one, please.
Yeah, definitely the last point. I'd like to know where they get their advertising figure from because 50 pounds, when you consider that we've been told we're spending, what was it, nearly 300 pounds on adverts? Two adverts, so they must have an amazing deal with the Rutland Times.
Okay, I'm going to take this as inclusion after work.
My proposal still sounds, thank you, Chair. What my proposal is, is that we support this application to the value of which I believe is 300 pounds.
Do I have a second there for that proposal?
I was seconded by Stan earlier on.
You've seconded all of them, okay? All those in favour of that proposal? One, two, three, four, four, four. All those against? One, two, three, four?
I have to say.
You have to say, okay. Leaves me with the casting vote, doesn't it? Therefore, I would vote against it. Okay. Thank you. The next one.
Yeah.
Please, no talking. My next point is item 12, which is your files are supposed to pay an invoice of 5,000 pounds, which is Duncan Clark.
It's just in five national regulations, any payment of 5,000 pounds needs the authorization of the council, so there's an invoice of 5,000 pounds.
Am I right in thinking that this expense has already been in...
It's already in the council's budget for the year and under planning.
And the works...
That's already up, so...
So it's just a formality of going through the same council books?
I'm sorry, I have to make a comment. A few years ago, I basically got into problems with this council because of challenging the, this particular contract. Today, we're almost in the same situation, in fact, worse than what we were back there. No way should the council be paying, I think it's ridiculous, it works out about 80 pounds plus VAT for substandard shallow compost and about 10 pounds worth of plants, so I will be voting against this. Not the idea, but I certainly can't approve an invoice for hanging baskets which we own to be filled for 8,688 pounds ninety.
Thank you. Any other point?
Yeah, the unit price for the hanging baskets is 29 pound ninety-five and the window boxes are 65 pounds. Now, I wanted the council...
Now, I wanted the council to clarify that we're, would you own the basket? Do we own the baskets or not?
No, I don't believe we do, Dave. I can't answer that question, but I don't believe we do.
I think we do.
This is the third, this is the third year of a three-year deal with plant.
So are we ironing the baskets then?
Well, it's all in that price. This is full planting, full maintenance.
So we're ironing them?
Yeah. As far as I know, I can check.
Could you check, please? Okay, I'm now calling for the vote. Do I propose to accept this motion? You're asking to make a proposal to authorize payment invoice over 5,000 pounds to Planscape.
Shocking. I will propose that we pay this invoice because the work has been carried out and it was agreed on previous years that this is what the council would do with Planscape for the town of Oakham. It's not rocket science, guys.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second? All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, all those against? Two, any abstentions?
Could you minute that, please?
Yes, okay, that's all right. Okay, thanks very much. It's now two minutes and nine. I would propose to extend this meeting by 15 minutes first. You ready?
I'll prepare some.
Do you have a second? All those in favour extending for 15 minutes? Three, all those against? One, two, three.
I'm four.
Okay, thank you, Mr Stubbs. The meeting is now...
One minute?
Yeah, so come on.
I can try and get some. I can run another two minutes. Okay, the last item there is a member responsible for preferations. I know if you're trying to get someone to do it early on and councillor Low has a free to take this role. So can I have a proposal for councillor Low to be the preferations member? That's what I heard. Councillor Stubbs, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. You have ten.
I'm staying.
Okay, well, that's not it. This could be something quite nice. Thank you very much. Have a good meeting.